Lovely pattern.
Thank you.
Wow.
And yes, we will have our wares for sale at the year-end KSA sale.
When is that?
So that's in mid-June, I believe it's the twenty-first.
June twenty-first?
I'm not sure if that's the exact day, it was sort of tentative, but around that time, yeah.
We'll watch for the date, so in June, oh, that's great.
Yeah, it's really exciting, yeah, thank you.
Beautiful work.
Yeah, you were good at carrying the yarn behind, that's tricky to still have stuff in it.
Photoshoot often, yeah.
Stuff in your head, stretch it.
Oh, yeah, that's...
Nice tension.
Hi.
Thanks for having me, my name's Jess, and I'm also a textile student, so I brought a similar example, this is a scarf that you opened in weaving class, so mine is made of cobalene, which is a mixture of carbon fibre.
Ah.
And textile.
Do you use a weaving machine, or?
Uh, we use a loom, so it's all an annual process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dressing glue, and then I also brought, um, this which is a maquette, or like a model miniature of the garments that I'm making for the drafting, class, pattern drafting class, you can have a little look at the illustration and model and some of the photos that inspired the garment that I'm working on for that.
The box is wonderful.
Yeah, it's good upcycling.
And is this, is this a person that's...
Yeah, so the garment is based on the landscape designer Gertrude Chico's, uh, lights and work.
Oh.
And so, um, the illustration is based on one of her garden plants, one of her planting plants.
Oh, I see, oh, it's wonderful.
And lastly, I'm just, I brought a dye sample for you guys to see, so this was dyed with avocado skins and avocado pits, so that's wool and then some cobalene.
Wow.
There's a little bit of dye stuff still on it, I suggest, but, um, I've been partnering with the Kootenay Co-op to use some of their waste products, so some of the overripe avocados and onion skins, used in a natural dye.
Wow.
For you.
Yeah, it's been really great, they generously donated, I think I've used over a hundred pounds of avocado already. Uh, the thing with that is that I really loved avocados before.
Yeah.
Not so much anymore.
Rest is coming.
Lovely work. And did all of you bring business cards? Because I only got...
You missed one of the cup.
Oh, I missed one, I'll get that later, okay. Well, it's lovely.
I only got two business cards.
Want to see what?
Really appreciate you coming tonight, and I have a friend who did the textile program, and, um, I know how condensed the courses and how hard you work, so I'm sure that we're taking you away from working on your project out tonight.
In a way, I suppose here we were contemplating whether or not we're going to go back to the studio.
Uh, yeah, but, um, it's beautiful, beautiful work, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
And the skin, she said, so you get beige.
Oh, thanks.
Okay.
Maybe you get beige from the inside too.
But you'd say it was the pit, he's been hard of hearing, you'd say it's done by the, you were using the pit and the...
And the skin, yeah.
Because you wanted to know why it wasn't green.
My question was, how come it's not green, it was avocado?
Yeah, surprisingly, things don't always make the color that they appear.
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
Well, thank you very much, that was really lovely to see these beautiful objects, it's really great to see more emerging artists in our community. All right, so next up, we have our public participation portion of the meeting. Um, City Council welcomes comments from the public on issues it's dealing with or on other issues of interest to the public. Um, before speaking, please identify yourself, stating your name and place of residence and the issue you're bringing forward. Please limit your questions and comments to a maximum of five minutes. Council will not make any decisions about the issue you raise at this meeting, but may refer the item to staff for follow-up. Topics raised in this session should be of broad public interest. Complaints of a personal nature will be dealt with by staff through the city's established complaint process. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Well, there is a few, all right, please come forward one at a time.
My name is Claude Shunka, I live in Nelson. I will talk about the Nelson Community Solar Garden. As clearly shown in my blog, nudgingthepredictable.blogspot.com, the location is unsuitable within expert installation of solar panels already markedly weakening since the garden went online last June. Pictures worth a thousand words. The site is unsuitable because limitations of its size have panels cast large shadows on other panels, making them far less productive than they should be. Added to this is that, because of the location's topography, the sun now hits it late in the morning and not until the usual spring/summer fog there has burned off. Also, no one has cleaned often thick snow off the panels between, during, and four periods of sunshine. The installation of solar panels, recommended to be done by experts, on galvanized metal mounting with concrete sonotubes below the frost line to avoid frost heaving and movement of frames, here was done by non-experts with wooden frames on above-ground concrete mount blocks. These poorly-aligned blocks promptly seem to be heaving now. On unsecured terraced beds of loose gravel and the wooden frames untreated and already with long cracks are warping. Being wet much of the time speeds that process. The end result is panels are buckling and on one side unevenly moving away from each other while on the other exerting pressure. This push and shove will soon have some explode. With conceivably heavy spring rain, the ground will become soggy fast and movement of blocks and frames will speed up with gravel washing away to lower points. Because of the interdependence of all components and the site, there is no way to fix issues individually. Of course, showing accountability to investors and the general tax-paying public, the project could be scrapped and started all over again, expertly elsewhere. Clearly, this will never happen. What will happen, though, is the current structure's probably not functioning past ten years tops. With CAO Cormac calling this, quote-unquote, "a low-value project", decisions by irresponsible planners were defined mainly by disingenuous cost-cutting. This seems of concern to the 2,280 visitors so far to my blog post, many of whom, possibly most, feel manipulated, some as investors. A few of their comments, first. Maybe the BCUC can do what this council can't, clean up the mess in city management and Nelson Hydro to force this city to actually be the corporation of the city of Nelson and make best-practice decisions. Second, the published monthly power output on the city's website for four months, from October seventeen to January eighteen, is a total of 6,125 kilowatt-hours. When we all need power the most, this only enough for about six months for one average, single home. Do you believe the city's claim of $330,000 to build a solar garden? What about future costs of vandalism and overall maintenance? Third, looked into investing in this initially, but after talking to one of the city's electricians, I backed away. The general consensus was, it would fail. Finally of interest here should be Carmen Proctor's rather predictable refutations of March fifteenth, only after the number of my blog post readers had been growing steadily, indirectly proving this bits and pieces terrorist site indeed is altogether unsuitable.
Thank you, Mr. Shunka, are there any comments or questions from council? Okay, thank you, we, I just wanted to remind everybody in the gallery that it's important to not name staff in a disparaging manner, but in a factual manner, and, so, thank you.
I have not done that.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Okay, is that, next speaker?
We've brought, uh, five slides to illustrate Martha's photographs.
Oh, it's okay.
That's okay?
Oh. It illustrates the, uh...
Our point, yes.
Is it, uh, Sarat's?
You could both state your names while we're waiting.
Sure, I can start. Uh, my name's Martha Clark, and this is Marlene Machmer. Um, I'm a resident at 917 Silica Street, and I'm speaking on the collective concerns of our neighborhood surrounding the proposed development at 918 Victoria Street. So we have a number of the local residents in the audience. We want to share some of our concerns on the impact of this development that you may not have considered. Our presentation is brief, and we have created a longer document outlining the details that we can provide each of you after. First, I'd like to just outline the area that we're discussing, and you can see it on the map.
I can't move the mouse, it's not... Oh, okay, she's doing...
Sorry.
Um, so we're discussing the area of the 900 block of Victoria Street, the back alley between Victoria and Silica Street, and then the parking area off the top of Victoria and Park Street. I'd like to review the, um, general concerns that we, um, that have been shared by the residents. First is, uh, pre-existing parking congestion. There's already insufficient parking for current residents, particularly in the winter when Victoria Street is closed. It's very difficult for our current residents to find parking in the current lot at the top of Victoria Street. Uh, we feel it's unreasonable that existing longtime residents have increased pressures on parking as a result of this, um, upcoming development. The second point is insufficient parking planned for the new development. There's only one spot per unit identified, uh, for the summer parking, and less than one spot per unit proposed for winter parking. There are no plans for visitor parking, a second vehicle per unit, or business vehicles. If you refer to the final page of the document, it does show the math that we're trying to show here. Uh, we feel that year-round onsite parking must be included in the developer's building plan, and that steep access and inaccessibility during the winter is really not an excuse for relieving the developer of this responsibility. And you can see, hopefully on the photos up there, it does show the steepness of the terrain. Third point is poor access on either side of the development. Victoria Street is a one, is one-way, it has a fifteen percent grade, and it's closed for five months of the year, from November through March. Uh, there is steep and narrow access in the back alley, and that's where the, um, parking spots, uh, onsite parking spots are proposed. We have dangerous winter road conditions in that alley with prior accidents. Both of these access roads are one-way narrow lanes that do not allow vehicles to pass, and we wonder about emergency access to these homes. Our fourth point is environmental concerns, uh, with green space degradation and water flow impact. The proposed new parking area removes green space, which serves as an important sound and visual buffer for, for the neighborhood from the busy park streets. The new parking area compounds unaddressed water and drainage issues that currently exist for three homes in the area, and developing the green space impacts wildlife values and a key wildlife corridor. The proposed new parking area will require incremental forest clearing at 1.5 tree lengths or up to sixty meters from the lot perimeter to accommodate worksafe PC regulations. We have a couple of, um, specific resident concerns, many more outlined in the document, but just two to mention tonight. The Morris Janson Home, which is at 609 Cedar Street, um, they've indicated that vehicles have hit their house or fence three times in recent years during slippery lane conditions, and the city engineer inspected the house last fall, agreed that the lane, because it has been built up over the past century, has been putting pressure against the house, causing it to push inward. Uh, they feel that increased traffic down that lane will further impact this problem. And then there's issues at the Graham Home at 909 Victoria Street, the Gould Home at 919 Victoria, and Machmer Home at 532 Park. Uh, concerns with altering the green space at Park and Victoria will increase already-existing groundwater and drainage issues through clearing and altering the landscape and slope. So all of those homes have issues, um, existing. We want to leave you with our recommendations. Uh, first is, we hope that you consider configuring development to enable year-round parking at the top of the property with accessible year-round snowplow access onsite. A loop access road or laneway across the east side of the proposed property with parking stalls onsite would achieve onsite parking and access year-round. This would reduce the back lane traffic all year round, and it would negate the need for the additional parking lot at the top of Victorian Park. We feel, uh, we'd like to reduce the number of units in the development. If the developer cannot provide onsite parking year-round, then perhaps the development would be reduced in units in order to meet that requirement. Provide visitor parking onsite. Restrict the number of vehicles permitted by tenants to one car per unit. Follow the City of Nelson Parking and Development bylaws, including the Development Permit Area Design Guidelines, Off-Street Parking and Landscape bylaws, and the Accessible Vehicle Parking Guidelines, and we've summarized those in the appendix to the document. And to not expand the parking at the top of Victoria Street. We feel this will remove an important sound and visual buffer, erode green space and wildlife values, and increase traffic congestion in an already unsafe location. In conclusion, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present these issues. We feel the long-term consequences of this development, which is out of scale for the current neighborhood, will significantly impact safety, traffic, parking, and congestion, as well as increased damage to some existing homes. We welcome you to visit our neighborhood so that we can show you our concerns. Thank you, are there any questions from council? Is there anything staff would like to add?
Um, I'm not, this application is not before us, and so I'm not sure that it makes sense to go into this.
Right, yeah.
There was no variances required on this project, they, the applicant met all of the zoning requirements.
We understand about that, that, uh, process.
Okay.
Okay? Good, great.
We have all written our own letters as homeowners around our specific concerns. I personally have not received any response from the city, and I don't know what, what the status for the other homeowners are. So, it would be nice to, to get some, some kind of feedback back with respect to the concerns that we've raised.
We, and I want to clarify, we're not concerned about development, we understand the need for housing. Um, we're really concerned about the traffic flow and the off-site parking and the precedent that's set for creating a, um, extra parking lot when there could be onsite parking that could mitigate some of the concerns we have.
Thank you.
We have the report, and, uh, staff will look at it, and somebody will respond.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we haven't had a, we haven't had a, uh, an application yet, so...
We have. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Um, well, this is a, um...
Just speak.
Just speak, it's a public, okay, come, come forward. Yeah.
Good evening, my name's Suzanne Chapel, I'm from Nelson, and, um, I have a PowerPoint presentation here, if I can show you quickly.
Just one moment?
No, we didn't.
I can't? Oh, you'll have to set it up.
Is this, is this, uh...
Suzanne, you're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda, so you...
Oh, I'm on the agenda. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
That's totally fine, yeah.
I'm just so excited.
Soon, soon Suzanne, we're looking forward to it. All right, so, uh, if there's nobody else who'd like to speak in the public participation portion of the meeting, we'll move on in our agenda to the delegations. First up, we have the Civic Theater with Eleanor Stacy, it looks like. And Brian. Welcome.
We're gonna play with it for a little while, because we have some presenting, uh, set up as well.
Are you, do you, are you setting it up over there, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting here, and sorry, it's not...
Sure, we won't take up too much of your time, just, just enough. I want to thank you, first of all, for the time, for the time you're sharing with us this evening, and for the, uh, sharing our vision, the opportunities at the Nelson Civic Theater Society.
Maybe you want to swing the mic around to the other side, or...
Or, nah, you know, because it is being broadcast.
Okay.
There you go.
Checking, check, one, two, three. Um, my name's Brian May, I'm, I'm one of the new board members on the Nelson Civic Theater Society, and with me tonight is Eleanor Stacy, who you know, our director, guide, juggler extraordinaire at the theater. Since its formation, the society's goal has been to be more than just the movies. That's the logo we have on our website, but it's to be, more than just the movies, it's to be more than just a good tenant for the city. It's to be a cultural and economic partner for the city, and so our purpose here this evening is twofold. One, we just want to report to the council, and the city as a whole, on the status of our operations and our programs at the theater. And two, and possibly more importantly, is to begin a crucial conversation this year about how our membership hopes to see this partnership develop. The Civic Theater plans to create a venue and an operation that is as unique as its community, and as soon as I say words like that, I know I sound like a salesman. And, but I really, I believe that I'm more of a pragmatist, a person who sees the pluses and minuses of how small operations can have bigger impacts, about the long-term, about the long-term, um, policy and management implications in some of these decisions. And, when I, I joined the board this year because I saw that the Civic Theater has a lot of pluses and minuses, and has long-term positive implications for this city. And they're in a position now, after four or five years, to be ready to move forward. And the result is, I end up sounding like a salesman, and I'm okay with that. The society's very fortunate, we're fortunate to have an iconic building as our venue. We're fortunate to have the city as our, as our landlord. And we're fortunate to have the support of a dynamic, engaged, and very curious community. So we have all these things going for us, we can check those boxes off. When the community made the decision, from a society, to run the theater, it wasn't simply an alternative to a private operator, or to recognize the needs to structure finances on a nonprofit basis, but to reflect the diverse interests of the Nelson area. A dynamic board governed by a diverse and committed membership provides the creativity, energy, and support to offer much more than being a simple tenant in some old theater space. And so at this position, in our time, we're ready to move forward, and Eleanor can speak a lot more eloquently and with a lot more detail, so I'll let her review some of the slides we have, where our operations are now.
So I realize we haven't been here to talk to council in a year, and so I figured maybe it was time for a little bit of an update. So there's been a lot of things that have gone on in the last little while, um, but not least of which is, uh, in 2016, uh, many of you may know, we, uh, received charitable status. And, uh, part of that, of course, was really looking closely at our mission. So up on the slide there, you'll see, uh, that our mission really, in addition to our commitment to, um, our venue, which is actually part of our charitable mission, is to preserve and, um, and celebrate the civic theater within the civic center. We also are dedicated to presenting and promoting film as a cultural and economic force in our society, advancing education about film and digital media, and then this last one is exciting. This, this is actually part of our charitable, um, language. Through the power of technology, which sounds very official, uh, offering our city and region a greater role to play in a global community. But really what's so exciting about this is it was part of our original, uh, vision to be a place that brings great big ideas into the community and puts, puts really, um, great ideas out into the world. But really, it was, um, that we were inspired by the city's vision to become an intelligent community, to really look at ways that we could be more visionary in embracing that. So there's been some really nice, uh, development in our vision surrounding that particular mission goal. Um, so a couple of statistics before we go forward, you'll see here, we have now, as of the end of 2017, we had eight hundred and seventy members, uh, which is, we're still working on getting that up to around fourteen or fifteen hundred. We'd like to see the numbers climb, but frankly, for a, a nonprofit theater organization, eight seventy is a pretty nice number. I gotta be honest. Um, in 2017, we saw four hundred and two screenings of a hundred and thirty different film titles. That's pretty great, actually. And we saw around forty-five thousand people through our venue. Um, of those, uh, nearly thirty-five thousand of them were tickets purchased. So for a theater in a city our size to sell thirty-five thousand tickets in a year, I'm pretty happy, gotta be honest. Um, so, uh, can I get into this now? Uh, our programs and services, um, again, to some extent, this is a bit of a review, but I also want to give you just a couple of details of things that have happened in the last year. So we're still doing plenty of film screenings, and those can be commercial films, independent films, documentaries, arthouse films, uh, different kinds of family content, but also local work. And actually, one piece we showed recently, uh, just a couple week ago, weeks ago, was a film called Hollow in the Land, which was filmed in Castlegar and was about Castlegar, which, by the way, is a little unusual that a community around here is actually featured as the place that it is. We all know this from Roxanne, which apparently is in Washington. Um, uh, we're a rental space to our community. Um, we have had live music take place in our space, uh, circus performances, and we actually have, um, ceiling, uh, rigging in order to be able to do aerial silk, uh, work in our space. Uh, we've had rehearsals, we've had video production. We've become a presenter of online content in a public forum, which is really exciting and actually quite innovative, because it allows people to do things that we're now doing quietly, you know, by ourselves on our computers, in a place where you actually still can build communities. So some examples of that have been the Disruptive Innovation Festival, which is an online festival, um, of really great content, uh, out of London, England, uh, that no one else in British Columbia, to my knowledge, is showing. Uh, we've done webinars and symposia, things like the recent Intelligent Community Forum Sessions, um, live streams like the Oscars, the New Year's Eve Countdown that we did with a bunch of kids in their pajamas in our New Year's Eve pajama party. And recently, the Kalan Hospice Society's event, where we presented a speaker live in Ottawa, who was at a conference, to a live audience here in Nelson, while we were also presenting a live speaker here. So we're looking for really wonderful ways to bring content to our local community in ways that we wouldn't be able to do before. Um, and then finally, the last two things, uh, growing our, the home of the Kootenay screen-based industry is no small thing. I can tell you that, it's become quite a project for us. Um, and, uh, uh, we're realizing that through monthly meetups, through open screenings, where people can bring their content to see it on a big screen, um, through Kinesis, which was our recent first stab at a local regional film festival, uh, with thirty-nine different pieces presented, um, uh, during that four-day event. And, um, and also kootenayfilm.com, which is, uh, a website that we want to develop into a substantial marketplace and resource for the local, uh, filmmakers and film projects that are taking place in our region, uh, so that people have the things that they need to do their work. And finally, our community events, which are signature for us now, things like the Oscar Party and the Zombie Walk and Home for the Holidays, um, stuff that often we try to do for free, because we really want to make sure that access is available to everybody in our community. So, um, these, uh, all of these programs and services have led to our 2018 to 2020 goals. This is feeling very, very, um, now, right now, I have to say, but we're getting there. Um, these goals are to build community, um, to focus on excellence in our program and service delivery, to foster the growth of this regional film industry, and to increase resiliency in our organization. And, you know, um, just some of the really exciting things that are happening here are, uh, that we're looking to decrease isolation in populations. So we have the Films with Friends program, that now on Thursday nights, people can come and get together with a bunch of people to go to a movie together, because we're finding there are people who don't go out in our community because they're alone. Maybe, uh, a lot of the things we're hearing are that there have been, you know, um, divorce, uh, or separation later in life, where they've lost their spouse. This is an opportunity to try and bring people out in a way that doesn't feel daunting, and allows them to feel engaged again. Um, we're also, um, really looking to continue to innovate in the ways in which we, uh, realize our programs and services. I mentioned that already, that it's important for us to look at what we're doing through a current lens all the time, and technology has been a frequent lens for us. Um, and actually, I wanted to mention that in our, um, film industry, one of the really exciting things happening right now is Jonathan Robinson is in our theater in the daytime, yesterday, today, and tomorrow, making a new, um, music video. And so we're offering that space to him in exchange for an associate producer title on his piece. So this is a really exciting new way for us to be able to make opportunities available to artists in our community. We really want to expand this, it's not about them performing in our space, and that's really critical. Uh, it's really about us offering developmental space so that projects can be realized at all. Because our space would be probably too expensive for a young filmmaker to have for three full days, so that's exciting. And then finally, this resiliency in the organization piece is really about becoming, um, an outstanding business. And we know that, you know, we're a young business, we started large. Uh, we need to refine our marketing and our communication still, we're working on that. We're looking to continually improve our box office, uh, we're always looking at our concession margins, uh, our membership growth. We want to make sure that we focus on staff training and retention. Uh, we have a staff right now of twenty-two people, if you can imagine, it's not small. Um, half of them are youth. And we also want to make sure that when we focus on youth, that we're looking at ways that we can continue to build their professional development, a lot of them being in jobs for the very first time. Uh, and this is, this is a big task when you have a bunch of young people in staff, because they don't always know all the things that we seem to think are, you know, first nature, you know, common knowledge about, not bringing your phone, your phones to work, or your friends, or whatever things might happen. But we've found we've got really great youth working with us. Um, and so, um, yeah, these have really been part of a larger process as well. These goals came at a great time, because, uh, we've been in the process of writing our revi- These goals came at a great time because we've been in the process of writing our revised business plan. And we had a last one in 2012. The next one will be available to read very soon. We're just in the last processes of it. And our new business plan really is set to demonstrate that in order for us to prosper, we really need to continue to work on our capital campaign. So you can see here, very simply written, "Two screens gives us sustainability. Three screens, we are making the case is where we can find our mission fulfillment. With two screens, the financial sustainability is there." But if we really want to see these programs and services develop and flourish in the direction that they're going right now, we need a little bit more space and a little bit more capacity to program different things at the same time. Case in point would be that we're only now showing Black Panther, where we've been getting emails for weeks about when we're gonna get it, because we wouldn't have been able to show it for four solid weeks straight, which is what Disney would have required of us until this week. So we don't have a lot of time to get into this today, but that business plan will be ready soon, and I'm certainly happy to talk with any of you about it in advance of that if you're interested in knowing more. So pushing ahead here, our plan, it hasn't deviated greatly other than perhaps getting boiled down to something that a couple of years ago had a little bit, had more bells and whistles. Right now, we're really looking at Phase One, Two, and Three being the first theater, the one that exists right now, and our lobby seeing a renovation, a demising wall, and then Phases Two and Three giving us our second and third theater spaces. What you can't see under there is that the total in three phases is a little bit less expensive, I'm sorry, the total, if we do it in three phases, costs us a little bit more than if we do it all at once. But our plan is that we'll have to close for a couple of months in order to get the first theater up and running and then be able to open that again while we finish the other ones. Getting this done is, of course, no small job. And for those of you who are good at counting to 100, which apparently I am not, major gifts is actually 23% of our goal, not 13%. There's three, there are really three phases. The founders phase, which is looking at our larger funding entities, really focusing on federal, provincial, municipal, regional grant applications and targeted requests. These would include the usual suspects. In our case, because we're a cultural organization and we're also supporting artists working in the field, we're now more of a candidate for the Federal Cultural Spaces Fund, which we can apply to for up to 50% of our project. Obviously, we'll be looking at Columbia Basin Trust, Regional District will be coming to you. We also are leaving open the option of going to the Columbia Basin Trust Impact Investing Investment Strategy if that option seems to be the right one for us. And really, the key for us in this first phase is to get to $240,000. That's the amount that we need to be able to build out our business, our physical plans, thank you, for the venue. Once we have that, it builds credibility for us as we approach other funding prospects, and it will also help us through all three of the phases of our campaign. And we'd really like to reach that goal by the end of 2018. So Brian and I are hard at work these days in these particular areas. And so once those are done, and our founder requests are still under consideration, we're gonna proceed to the major gifts segment of this. This will be the stage where we start to talk to corporate prospects, larger foundation prospects, looking at significant donations and sponsorships. And the phase is $700,000, as I said, 23%, not 13. And we're looking to do that by the end of 2019. And finally, at that point, that's when we get all public. That's when we bring this back home to the community and bring that last 10% out, and it becomes a very public piece where we talk about community support. It's a really good time to bring fundraising to the community because the majority of it is done, and we can really make our community members feel like they can be part of finishing a project rather than being at the very beginning where it feels a little more daunting. And that final phase will be $300,000. So, you know, all of these are kind of, you know, it's a bit of a quick and dirty introduction. And as I said, there'll be more information in our business plan. But we're hoping to break ground August 2019. So that'll be month seven of our, oh, you can't see this at all. So month seven is right here. That means nothing to you right now in this. But this is just the, this is where the $240,000 is in, and then this is when we do all of our design work, our tender process, and then month seven is when we hope to start to actually build. And we're thinking it'll probably be around four months. Of course, we'll know better once our plans are finished. And after that, we'll be able to reopen the original theater and then start on those other two spaces. So I'm gonna pass this over to Brian to talk a little more about the future, and thank you all so much for having us and for listening to my Coles Notes version of that big old plan. I really tried, but...
That was Nicole's notes version. What we wanted to finish off saying was, we all recognize through our history here in Nelson, that a private operator with a business model based purely on entrepreneurial market competition is not gonna survive with a single theater. It didn't work. And we also know that there won't be any saviors who are gonna step forward to run the theater. But it's clear this community wanted something. They wanted more than just a theater. And the stakeholders that we have, including our clients, our members, the city, the Regional District, Columbia Basin Trust, the province, the feds, at different levels, with the local businesses and with community associations, we have the partners to make it more than just a theater. But step one in building that partnership, as we said, we want to be a cultural and economic partner with the city. Step one in building that partnership is to support each other. One of the city's greatest values, of course, is to provide programs and facilities that enhance the livability of people in this community. But one of your greatest challenges, of course, is the less glamorous asset management portfolio. We offer something, we think the theater offers something to support both your goals, the livability aspect and improving that in the community, and also the asset management aspect of it. With, as Eleanor was saying, we have stable profit margins. We're managing to employ 22 people, but our greatest challenge is to maintain a healthy balance sheet going forward and to create long-term financial stability. And that's how we provide the city with the most pragmatic benefit, is if we're stable, you have a stable tenant. The council, of course, is always debating capital reserve accounts and their 40-year depreciation and maintenance schedules, and what we offer is a stable tenancy that doesn't require ongoing support. And a strong tenant that's able to maintain the most visible part of an iconic building in this town, a building that we all know isn't going anywhere. That's pretty rare, but together, we've all created that with the Civic Theater and with the society. So the question for both of us is how do we maintain that and build on it for long-term value? The greatest part, of course, is that in doing that, we realize the true community value of the programs that Eleanor was enunciating. A venue that offers entertainment for people of all age groups, a center for community dialogue, a space for nonprofits and other groups to gather with their members, facility with program, production capability, and program support for the film industry, and of course, a place for Halloween zombie walks. So our business plan will spell out that in a lot more detail on why moving to a second venue, why the operations allow us to have choices in movies and to have different market niches, and that will get us to operational stability, and how having that third theater allows us to move into fulfilling all these things that make us more than just a theater. And why we think, and you saw that in the cost projections, how each phase drops down a little bit because there are operational efficiencies in building One, Two, and Three. So we want to see that. But unlike other fundraising projects that I've worked on myself in this town, this one has to have the support from strong partners, and it has to be done in synchronized phases. Since the theater offers many benefits in cultural, in financial, in job building, in industry building, as well as entertainment, because it offers so many benefits, we're able to identify a number of different partners with different interests that we can bring on board, we're hoping to bring on board. But the base of our pyramid is local and regional government. As you all know, that when you're working in projects like that, everybody wants to know, well, what's this, what's this partner doing? What's this person contributing? How does that leverage into? And everybody has a different need. And each, each partner can participate based on their ability, based on their government structure, based on what their goals are. And each has to participate with us to gain the support from other groups. So that's why we need the city involved to gain the support from other groups as well. So what we're wanting to ask the city board tonight is nothing specific. In the past, I've been to the council and asked for specific things. We're not, what we're looking for tonight is a letter of support. But a letter of support that is just saying, "We think this is a great project and you should support it," we'll probably want to tie that with some sort of firm financial commitment within a letter of support. But the letter of support allows us to talk to other groups and to show that the city is buying into this project. We want to be included in grant applications. It's always tough when we're applying for things that are not, that are the same that you're applying for. It becomes competitive. The city's been very successful, $6 million for a water upgrade. That was an amazing project that you did there. So to be included in some of these grant applications, we know that sometimes means that you're having to balance your different needs at the city and possibly forego other projects, but you've been very successful. We believe this is the time for us all to build joint equity in that civic theater. And there's a number of grant applications that you go for that, and we're not even aware of, of some of the process that you go through. So that's a discussion that we want to have and how we can, we can use that to our leverage. We want you to consider how we can tie some existing infrastructure or maintenance in the building to that project so we've got cost efficiencies. So we don't want to be spending money twice when we could be doing it once as part of that construction project. And we want to enter, primarily, we just want to enter into immediate discussions on the best way to structure the support to fit the timing with other grant applications that we have to work on and to fit the timing with the actual construction as laid out in Eleanor's. So we're not asking for anything specific right now. What we're looking for is to start those discussions. This is the year that the board has got everything in place to get the business plan, to get the nonprofit status. All of these ducks are lined up. And so this next year is the year that we have to put it all together. And to do that, we have to start with step one, and step one belongs with this discussion here. And everybody can bring something else to the table, but what we need is letters of support, we need some discussions, not for funding right now, but for funding somewhere in the future as we start the construction and using that as leverage to talk to other groups. So we want to thank you tonight for allowing us to come here and share the opportunity to tell us what we're doing, how we've become more than just a theater, how we want to be more than just a tenant in the theater building. And we want to start, get hold of administration, start having some discussions on the best way to structure this for the future. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Just wondering when we can expect to see the business plan?
Really soon. Those are like famous last words. Just to be more specific, we're working with the Basin Business Advisor Program. So I'm actually meeting with someone there again tomorrow, and we're really in the last lap of it. It's really coming down to like last details. So I'm feeling, I feel really good about being done very, very soon, the next two, three days.
We look forward to seeing it.
Me too.
I bet. Any other questions or comments?
It's time. I refer, I motion to refer this information to staff.
Sure. Does somebody want to make that?
I'll make a...
Don't need it?
All right. Moved by Counselor Morrison.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Wilmington, if we need it. All in favor? That sounds good.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on our docket, we have the community project. So I think we can welcome Suzanne Chappell back up front with her memory stick.
Yes.
We, we have something a little bit funny going on with our screen here, but the audience can look at that screen and this one, and the rest of council has all the information with their agenda package, so.
Should I just remind you, we have 15 minutes.
All right. And I just, I want to let you know, Suzanne, that we have quite a heavy agenda ahead of us with another couple of meetings, and so we're just gonna ask you to stick to your 15 minutes, and I'll raise my hand at around 13, then you'll know.
Yeah, I have, yeah, quite a bit, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing.
Perfect, great.
Really just gonna give you this PowerPoint, and then I just honestly wanted to say, I thought it was very synchronistic with the man was, the first guy who spoke, very synchronistic. Okay, so I'll just pass around how this all started for me. Sorry, Tanzy. My name is Suzanne Wilma-Chappell. I'm here to present to the council my idea for a community project for an EM-free zone greenhouse. This is the model that is being used right now in Nunavut. And I had an opportunity this very day to speak to a person who's from there, who knows who's been to the greenhouse and knows the problems and the goods and bads and what's happened for the community using this. So that was very synchronistic as well, so something is running well. First slide. Okay, now, where's, there's. So, Dear Mayor Deb, council members, and peers, I begin by bringing your attention to what local people and some experts have said regarding EMF waves that we are now bombarded with on a constant basis with increasing levels. In consideration that several more cell towers are to be built and installed within the Kootenay range, we must begin to look at alternative technology and growing technologies, techniques to maintain our standards of organic and be environmentally responsible. Many speakers have told us that currently this illness severely affects 3% of the population, and I have heard up to 10. No, that's more recent, and affects approximately 35%, and that these percentages are expected to rise as the effects of the EMF-EMR are cumulative. Symptoms range from rashes, ringing in the ears, migraines, angina, symptoms similar to those associated with chronic fatigue syndrome and fibromyalgia. One speaker said that the network through the 17,000-square-kilometer Fortis BC service area would create a biological killing field. Double blind shows no doubt. Repeated disruption was found at one meter from a smart meter in blind tests on a healthy adult male. Dr. Leon warned this effect silently makes our hearts work too hard. After chronic stress, he had to halt a later blind test on a woman due to the meter's rapid apparent impact. Jerry Kozak of Canada had chronic palpitations that overrode his pacemaker, relieved only by blocking his smart meter. Dr. Carl Merritt, a U.S. physician and engineer, advised, "Don't have your kids or elderly or sick people sleep on the other side of a wall where a smart meter is." He points out, "Whole-body exposure is involuntary and at times considerable." Here I have, this was a YouTube clip video that I saw in 2016 in September by a U.S. lobbyist. And we're not gonna see that, obviously, but basically, he said that this 5G rollout, which he called for the 5G phones, is increasing the data, but they're using a new infrastructure. And that infrastructure has special antennas, and those special antennas allow the microwaves to penetrate body tissue. And you can see that yourself, it's in, it was in the email that I sent. You're all welcome to actually see it for yourself. We don't have time to go through it right now. So I'm not gonna go through all of this. It's just the safety code is not conclusive. The smart meter radiation tests were done when the smart meters were idle. Says right here, "For radio frequency background during the test, RF sources within the testing facility," namely, "cell phones carried by the testers, other smart meters in the facility, were turned off to minimize the internal background. The RF background was monitored at each position, 30 centimeters, one meter, 30 meters, and over 30 meters, while the smart meters were idle." So they do these tests that say it's conclusive. Well, they're not truly doing a real test. So I'm trying to point out, we are really actually facing something that is going to be paramount. People who have difficulties with their heart, people have any kind of actual defibrillation, these kinds of things are going to be increasing at a level that we don't know yet. When those, when those six cell tower goes up, we're gonna be bombarded on a level we have not ever experienced. I myself am sensitive to microwaves and electromagnetic frequency. I use my device that I actually invented for my condition that I've been using for four years, and I use it, and it's part of this, it's actually part of the next phase here. So we really want to focus more on the solution now. We have the problem, we know there's a problem, now we'd have to look at what the solutions are. So we can learn from a model already being successfully run in Nunavut called Growing North. And I'm proposing a community greenhouse to be built according to specialized standards for those who are electromagnetic... for those who are electromagnetic sensitive, specialized care, and larger grow food operations for the community at large. I'm sorry to have to say it, but as soon as those Columbia Wardens erect the six more cell towers in this area that have been planned and are to be built, even right over our heads at Elf and Mountain, organic growers will no longer be able to say it's truly safe food. Our water will be radiated at a level we have not yet experienced, and more cases of electrosensitivity will be forthcoming. So the concept starts with the Nunavut Growing North Project. I would like to run the clip at the end that shows them how it's built. It's built specifically to withstand a heavy winter, and with the added things that are coming next, the next level here, they have a special roof that holds in heat and moisture that works. They have a community of volunteers that help with the planting and help with distributing to the community. And they sell in baskets at half the cost, put money where we need it into the mouths of the community. For eight months of the year, it's actually solar powered, he explained, with only one to three hours of sunlight, it can heat itself 30 degrees warmer than outside conditions. So that's them looking for a government grant, and I'm looking to expand that idea in a deeper way. It's nearly a 13-meter geodesic greenhouse dome. Canning says repulse bay will lessen the stress on families by producing more than 5,400 kilograms of fresh produce during the six-month growing season. Not counting the land donated by the hamlet or the free labor, the Growing North Project would clock in at more than $150,000. So that's what it costs to build it, according to what that was, that said there. My proposal is that you now take that as a foundation. Then you add your Faraday cloth, which is what everyone is doing now to keep, that's what I'm doing, and anyone I know who is sensitive, you must use the EMF cloth. There's different levels of EMF cloth, and I actually have, do you want to see the sample?
Sure.
There's two levels. One is, of course, more expensive, but is the actual EMF protective layer. This is, this is a lesser mess, but it's more, it's inexpensive. You could double it or triple it. That one costs $90 for one square meter, whereas that is 100 feet for $50. So I've actually used it, I know it works. In addition to that, I would add that these, this is called a psi coil. I've done three years of tests with these in the ground. We're getting at least 100% faster growing rate and more yields. And that is, I have proof of that, I don't, this is not in the proposal, but I actually have documented proof, pictures that show, you know, this is the seed, the control, we got 110% on average increase. So if you use the Faraday cloth and the coils, the coils keep the earth resonance in, and the Faraday cloth keeps the harmful radiation out. So then you have a whole new level of organic. So it's, it also has a business model with that, because of that. So then, the concept is that we get volunteers to help with actually making it and doing the building. Then we put out memberships, so people can buy memberships, so they would have a stack that would be their vertical growing field. They could buy memberships to have access to that food. Then some of the food could be distributed to food banks. And then another section of it would be for high-end restaurants who want that high-level organic food. That is, that is basically the concept. I said, with land donated for the project, we feel we could be producing food by summer 2019. This food could be partly offered to local groups and to high-end businesses and restaurants, locals who participate by volunteering or who pay for memberships. We would like to see local natives and the Métis Association involved. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Suzanne. Now, have you spoken at all with seeds or the food cupboard, or, you know, any of the other, the local food council, about the possibility of working together with something like that?
Not on that level. I've asked them what they have, and just doing a bit of research. I haven't come forward with them with the concept yet. I wanted to see, you know, if we actually have a chance to move forward with it, if there's actual interest enough. I think the man kind of made the point earlier that we really need a better greenhouse. And I think I've brought forward a proposal that is feasible.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
I have a question more generally about these new towers that you're talking about from Columbia Wardens. Is this not something that we're informed about?
It's part of the CBT expansion of broadband across.
There are six in the Kootenay Range, one of them going right up on, and I will just say that I already have very bad symptoms. I have to sleep with at least two of them going in my house. So I don't experience pounding headaches and terrible pain in my stomach, and I have to, you know, literally carry it around with me now. And if it's that bad for me now, what's it going to be like for me when that goes up? I'm going to be worried going outside, you know?
I remember somebody approaching me when I was running for council, talking about the frequency level, and how if the frequency even could be changed, that they felt that would be helpful. And so I'm wondering also whether or not you or your group, your community that you're representing, has gotten in touch with the World Health Organization around their EMF project, and talking about that frequency change and some of the other concerns you're bringing up.
Yeah, well, microwaves are, I believe, a Class IV carcinogenic, according to the UN. And so this is partly, I believe, why some of these tests are being faked somewhat, or, you know, they're sliding it under the carpet. The big business want the phones, they want the data. But what I have, what I've seen here, did I put it in here? No, it's not there. Oh, yes, on Slide Seven. This was from Wikipedia. We actually only need 27 decibels to run 3G mobile phone class, power class two mobile. Their move, the idle smart meters are running at 30 decibels. So that's even more than we actually need. So the problem is they keep increasing the strength, and then they're going through these new antenna, which I am concerned about.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for listening to me. And I will speak to the other, I was hoping for some guidance and direction in that regard of people to speak to and angles to approach.
Well, those two groups already have greenhouses, so maybe.
Yeah, but not like that.
No, but it might be a way to test what you're talking about.
That would be very nice, because I'm really hoping that we can do something.
Oh, Councilor Adams?
I would just like to thank you for wearing your sash.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I wear it with honor.
Thank you. All right. So since we have no late items, I'd like a resolution to adjourn this meeting before we carry on to the next one. Okay, Councilor Morrison, Councilor Wilmington, all in favor? We're adjourned.
And we reconvene.
And now we'll reconvene in moments, I guess.
Yeah, immediately.
Yes.
Try not to steal the mayor's pen.
Don't see my agenda there.
Thanks, everyone, for your patience this evening. It was, it was a, an extraordinary night of public hearings for us.
We're not done yet.
And we're not done yet, but we are on the homestretch.